I just want to thank you all for coming out to the public hearing of today, January 24th, to discuss changing the road management from elected road commissioner to appointed road commissioners. Ed can't make it tonight, he's out dealing with floods as well as Mr. Langley, but he is in favor of having one director in this position as well. So I'm going to start with an opening statement. The public hearing and the question brought before you is because of the two recent resignations of road commissioners. We are at an opportunity to change the way our roads are being managed. I've lived in Acton for 18 years and have witnessed several road commissioner elections and the toxic gossip that goes with them. As an outsider, not knowing the candidates well, as an outsider, the elections seem to be a popularity contest rather than who had the qualifications, commitment, and dedication to perform what was best for Acton. Yes, I've heard people say, "The roads are fine and safe, and why change?" Being a select ward member for almost three years now, the behind-the-scenes road and bridge management is not highly functional, and I've seen several administrative duties being overlooked or put on backburners. I'm not pointing fingers, but when you elect a new select ward member every year and a new road commissioner almost every year, it's hard to grab the reins and hold on before hands are changing again. Excuse me. In hiring a director of public works, Acton will have the opportunity to find one person -- excuse me -- who will take charge of project planning according to priority and budget for Acton as a whole and not two sides. The even-steven split down the middle is not reality, and in my opinion, not saving the town any money either. This person would submit a line item budget and oversee adherence or communicate otherwise, oversee projects to ensure safety standards and budgetary compliance. This person would create a record of history of work done on Acton's roads and bridges and create a 10- to 20-year plan that sees Acton as a whole rather than two sides. This person would speak with New Hampshire and Maine DOT, border towns, engineers, DEP, IF&amp;W to discuss plans and grants for our bridges, culverts, dams, and roads. They would attend workshops and seminars to determine best practices for Acton's roads, understand the policies of Maine's labor laws and OSHA. They'd work with Acton's town departments and committees to develop short and long-term planning and budgeting. These are just a few important and some expensive administrative duties that I saw being neglected for what I feel is due to the lack of one person being responsible, not anyone in particular. I ask that tonight be questions, suggestions, and opinions, and try to steer away from negative comments. We are here looking for your support to move forward, one way or another, and to work together. So with that said, Jennifer's going to run through the slideshow presentation that we've been discussing for the last few.
Kim's getting some hard copies. All right, you can take a hard copy home with you. Virginia, is that okay?
Yes, it is.
So as we told you, I'm going to walk through a presentation that's put together by the board of selectmen. The first law, it may look irrelevant to some of you as we go into a road commissioner description, is regarding me and my request to make this statement clear and concise from the beginning. Most of you should know by now that I hold two positions for the town of Acton. I'm the town clerk, tax collector, and registrar voters, the bottom one, that is an appointed position by the board of selectmen, and my job functions are mandated by all state statutes. So you have to have insurance, or how you register your car, everything is mandated by the states. My town administrator position that I wear when I'm not being a town clerk, I'm a town employee who reports to the board of selectmen. My primary function is to serve at the pleasure of the selectmen and be the first point of contact in all aspects of the town, provide administrative and secretarial support to the town, and serve as a direct liaison for the selectmen between employees, contractors, committees, property owners, and boards. The most important reason that I want this up there is that I want you to all hear regardless of what's said throughout this slide presentation tonight, is that I have no direct interest in the road commissioner position, nor the outcome of this meeting or the vote in any way. The instruction and the content that you're going to see in the slideshow is put together by the board of selectmen. Did I typically do the work? Yes, but all information comes from them. Okay? Special town meeting that they're considering holding in February is going to have the first question that says, "To see if the town of Acton shall vote to authorize the board of selectmen to appoint one road commissioner, public works director, for a term of one year effective the 1920 fiscal year." So if approved, this will not start until July 1 of 2019. If approved, there will be a warrant on the annual town meeting looking to fund the position. We presented this presentation to Warren Finance and the road committee first. Some of the questions that we heard was, "Why are you including the word road commissioner? Why not just make it public works?" If the town of Acton doesn't have a charter, which you don't, this required by law that you have a road commissioner, so the title is combined for that reason. Somebody has to be the road commissioner. Why now? Something that we've heard a lot of Warren Finance and I'm seeing on the internet is, "Why now? Why are you rushing this through? Why aren't you waiting until June?" Because Maine revised statutes, Title 30A, which is what the town of Acton, on U.S. law is followed, Chapter 121, Section 2526, says, "A town may determine at a meeting held at least 90 days before the annual meeting whether one or more road commissioners will be chosen and the term of the office may not exceed three years." So by law, they come to ask this question 90 days before the annual meeting. With a second resignation, this was the time for them to do it, 90 days before June. So they're not rushing into it, they're trying to meet the legal obligation of the 90 days. Current situation, that's going on now in the town of Acton, they want to make sure that no one's confused on what's going to happen to who and how it stands. So currently, District 1, Joe Letourneau. Joe Letourneau has been appointed to that position for a three-year term. When Mr. Winchell resigned, his term was good until June of 2021. The board of selectmen had the authority by law to appoint the remainder of the term. Certain positions, like selectmen and school board, have to be elected in the case of resignation. Road commissioner is not one of those. So they appointed Joe Letourneau, the remainder of his term, no matter what happens, Joe Letourneau is an employee of the town. District 2, Dave Langley is an appointed town employee road commissioner until February of 2019. So when Mr. Moody resigned, his term was only good through June of 2019. A lot of people are saying, "Well, why didn't they just appoint Langley until June of 2019?" Because they can't. They have to advertise the position, just like they did on Letourneau's side, Winchell's side, they have to advertise it through the fair hiring process. We're allowed to appoint him because we're showing steps that we're trying to get through the winter based on the second resignation. So that's where the town stands now. What the board has seen and what has brought them to this, and I'm going to reiterate, I could go through this slide, it's not one person or the other, we're not going to get into names, these are concerns that brought the selectmen to where they are today. Unequal pay on each side. As elected road commissioners, it's possible that you vote, that both of the guys could have an employee that both have the same experience and have both hit their 10-year, but one road commissioner may be paying them $15 an hour, the other one may be paying them $18 an hour. The warrant that you voted on in June has a range, and if they're a flagger or a general driver and it's 15 to 18, it's up to their supervisor to adjust that accordingly. Refusal of work to be done. We get calls regularly saying that this road needs that, this road needs that. The guys have to prioritize, we know that, but in other situations the selectmen have had to deal with is them just telling them no, but they weren't able to do that work. Inability to prioritize bridges, dams, and culverts. This has been a big conversation over the last six or eight months. DOT has sent letters pretty much annually saying what work needs to be done on different bridges. There are differences in opinions and in regards to when that work needed to be done. Department of Labor violations. Without getting into personnel issues, I can tell you that we have had people terminated from underneath prior road commissioners that was completely illegal, the way that it's handled from start to finish. Okay? Refusal of tour and bar for drug and alcohol. Talk about that one for a minute, because a lot of people don't understand why they want to switch to employees. So if you are a CDL driver in the town of Acton, you are required to here, provide proof that you're in the pool, or you have to be in the town school. So if, so we have a random pick, so we're involved in a pool, we've got all of our CDL drivers in there, we're with the company, we were with the company called LexisNexis, and then once every quarter, they would contact me and say, "John Doe is full, you need to send him a drug test." I'm going to tell you that firsthand, I had called an left official and told them that they have scheduled, and they say, "No."
No, we're, you know, we're not on the clock.
So I'm going to call the attorney, huh? He just said, "No, he's not going." That's a personality that we're not going to go into any further. Road complaints, call and answer. I've had numerous calls, and again, we're not going inside, this goes even further back than, you know, the two recent ones that have resigned. Refusal of work with the road committee and RSMS, is a strong one for the board of selectmen, they feel like this program can be extremely beneficial to the town. Refusal to attend meetings. If the board of selectmen holds a joint Warren Finance meeting and they want to show the townspeople why we're asking for X amount of money on a particular budget, and we say to the road commissioner, "Can you please attend this meeting so that you can present your budget?" No. Overspent budget lines. What we see in this position, so, and this is another area that there is some confusion, I think, as far as what the selectmen are thinking. So the idea of candidate will have considerable knowledge and practices of public works, maintenance functions applicable to municipalities. The director will develop and oversee all roads, specs, bids, projects within this town. Additionally, the individual will have strong communication and administration skills. This is not the ad that we would run if it did pass, but it gives you an idea, the key piece is down bottom, this position does not require any equipment as the work will be subcontracted out. What the board has told me that they continue to read is, "How are we going to afford all this trust? How are we going to afford to maintain all this equipment?" We're not. What the board is looking to do is to have one person be the administrator, one person to say, "Okay, you are the administrator of the roads. You handle it all. You subcontract the town, he's going to continue to plow over here, we're going to go out to bid over here, we're going to see who can do that when summer comes around, when we have all these paving projects, this person's going to meet with all of the, you know, HR, Carol, and Pike, they're going to take care of, everything road-related, they're going to manage all of that." Now, we did say in our first presentation that, yeah, we're looking for somebody that can get in a truck and push a plow if necessary, but we're not looking for somebody that has equipment, we're not looking to change the way any of that done. This is primarily a management position. So why appointed board of selectmen? For townwide accountability, so all the employees are treated the same. Townwide transparency, obtaining personnel authority, being able to tell the employees, the board of selectmen, tell them what to do on a day-to-day basis, they want to have that same equalization throughout the town. Maintain town records and history, create long-term plans. It's hard to plan five or six years out what you're going to do on a particular road if you're determined to renew your appointments. Enforce ethical behavior. Enforce ethical behavior. Code of conduct, that's been talked about at many selectmen meetings. We can't force elected officials to do anything when it comes to votes. Utilize line item budgeting, fair hiring and termination process. That is key. Our treasurer, who handles a large piece of the HR, has met with the board on numerous occasions with concerns about how some of these employees have been handled. Additional reasons. So allow the most qualified person to be chosen rather than a popularity contest. All personnel will be town employees. Townwide, single point of contact, coexisting with all other current department departments. You have an issue with the fire department, you call the fire chief. You have an issue with transportation, you call the transportation superintendent. You have an issue with the roads, you call public works director. Allows for consistent communication with interactions with all town committees, including the road committee and board of finance. So the board of selectmen, county, deputy, as the town administrator, you're going to be here Thursday night at 7:00, and you're going to do this presentation, they're going to tell the public works director the same thing. You're going to be at a Warren Finance meeting, and you're going to present your budget set. That's the idea behind it. What we see if it's approved, so the idea that the board is looking for is that Acton will be one town, no longer divided by districts. So, we know that snowplowing is still going to take two groups of people to do that. The snowplowing is still going to be separated. Am I going to say they might change the lines around a little bit and start the areas based on what these gentlemen think is best? That's a possibility, but it's one town. So winter maintenance will be contracted out up to three years. The summer work will be offered to winter contractors first and/or town road employees. And what you see here for '16, '17, and '18 is the amount of summer maintenance paid out in the last three years, just wages. And the reason that's up there is so that you can see, so right now, we know that we only have one road commissioner essentially, and the other one is a filling. It's possible for that small amount of numbers, that one person, you know, if we say, "Okay, we have a public works director, he's contracting out to Mr. Letourneau, time to sweep the roads," it's possible for that amount that Mr. Letourneau might have enough staff to do the entire town. They're going to be as needed as bases. All work will be delegated and overseen by this new position. Some ideas for the proposed job description, and remember, this is just a proposal, you know, we're not tying anything down until the town decides that's the direction they want to go in. Expect town roads and ways to determine priorities and improvements. Take a look at the entire town and figure out what direction we're going in. Communicate short and long-term plans and priorities for the roads. Create and implement a road budget, one-town road budget, so we don't have to have the same amount of paving on each side anymore. We have one working. We prioritize based on our RSMS system and the knowledge of the gentlemen that are already moving jobs. Determine and schedule the needs of subcontractor major road construction and upgrades, prepare specs for projects requiring bids and coordinated purchases. Research and analyze costs, vendors, the best value for the department. Don't we go out to bid for sand, we're going out for paving, that's what this person's going to do, the administration piece. Initiate road maintenance and construction projects. Ensure compliance with federal and state regulations. Perform manual labor when required, and that is going to be minimal. The town is not looking to buy trucks or put this person behind the wheel unless it's an emergency. Ensure compliance with OSHA and DEP regulations and requirements. For those of you that are hearing this for the first time, this is a big piece of it. The town of Acton is in jeopardy in a lot of employment areas based on past history. They've got to come up to speed with what the fair hearing process is. Works with the CEO to monitor all subcontracted road construction and upgrades. Schedules, assigns, and supervises the road crew in maintenance and construction work. So schedules, assigns, and supervises, the thing I kept reading, or at least kept saying to you, "They think that we're going to buy destruction, they think we're going to take roadway." No, we're simply going to delegate it out. Direct to participate in the sanding, salt, and snow removal of roadway, schedule additional part-time workers for plowing and sanding as needed. Set roadway, determine culverts, and determine all of the material for soil stabilization. Direct installation and replacement of road and bridge signs, and direct the maintenance of sand and salt sheds. Advise the board of selectmen on road activities and problems when needed, and infer all the subordinates during the development and progress of various projects. Participate in the hiring of road personnel who supervises and evaluates them. Your fire chief fires this with people, I hire people that's in my office, but at the end of the day, the board of selectmen are all town employees. Receive and respond to citizen inquiries and complaints. I have to say, even though I'm not involved in this, that's my favorite one. Everybody goes to that person. Maintains and arranges the safekeeping of records, legal documents, plans, records of road surveys, and other road-related documents. We know that as people come and go, selectmen come and go, staff changes, paper gets shuffled, need to get organized. Over the last 10 years, we've worked extremely hard to make files for every one of our roads, and everything that we have over 40, 50, 60 years that is all now filed by roads. We're looking to maintain that and keep up with it. Attend training sessions, workshops, and meetings as directed. Integrate and use of the RSMS system. Works with the road committee as directed. Completes department bills and payroll. That might seem like one that you just assumed was going to happen. We've had road commissioners in the past elected that just come in and expect that the treasurer do their payrolls each week. Meets weekly with the town administrator to advise on all road issues. I'm going to stop on this one for a second because I heard the Warren Finance meeting, this one was brought up. Meets weekly with the town administrator to advise on all road issues. Doesn't mean they answer to me, they answer to the board of selectmen, that's clear. I meet with all the department heads in town regularly to be able to update the board of selectmen on what's going on in their department. So please don't misunderstand that that is a meeting, not a direction. Oversees bridges and culverts. Develop a one, three, and five-year plan for the town. Perform or schedule building and round maintenance. This one's brought up in some talk as well. What we're going to do is, is there another way that we can save money with this position? Can we have this position possibly do some of the lawn care around town? Can we have them, you know, go out maybe if it's just one salt sign, it's something they can do? So we will be looking to save money in other areas and delegate some of that work. And then everybody's favorite, any and all duties as assigned by the board of selectmen. That's on the end of all of our job descriptions. Current hourly rates. Going to review where everybody's at now financially and talk about where they see this position going. Director of planning, CEO, been here for 20 years, makes $36.42 an hour. Town administrator, town clerk, tax collector, registrar voters, been here 13 years, and I make $36.05 an hour. Fire chief, three years, $32.19. Treasurer, 14 years, $30.65. The road commissioners, the amount varies, they're at $30 an hour. Transportation superintendent is $20.25 for eight years, and then we have a general maintenance position, whether it's changing the sign out there, taking the trash, that's $20. Gives you an idea of where everybody's at currently. So where would we bring a public works director in? The amount of hours is going to be 40 hours. If you don't think that there's 40 hours worth of administrative work to be done road-related, I would encourage you to join me for an afternoon so that I can show you everything that needs to be done. The board is looking at an hourly rate between $22 and $30 an hour. They're basing that off of what their other department heads make, what surrounding towns are offering, and it's going to depend on experience. If this passes, they will put through a list of minimum requirements, and the rate will vary according to them. So you're looking at the salary depending on the hourly rate, $22 to $30. So with four benefits, you're looking at $45.7 to $62.4, which would be the highest, which is the current amount that the road commissioners are made. So, once we have salary in place, we have to add fight the unemployment insurance. So the next slide shows you that $45.7 becomes $74, all the way down to the $62.4 becoming Undesigned fund balance. Put this up there so that you can see where your savings account, if you will, your undesignated fund balance is. Where it started in 2010, you had $599,000. In June of '13, at the end of last fiscal year, we were at $1.3. The auditor recommends that you have a minimum of three months' worth of bills in there, and we have since developed a fund balance policy which assess forces any sitting board of selectmen to roll over a certain percentage of that offset tax. So we do that every year based on the policy and based on how much is in there. If you decide not to change, and this is an area that Kim specifically really wanted me to stress on, the board is okay with not changing. They're trying to give you the option based on what they hear you saying to them on a weekly, monthly basis. If you don't want to change to elected, to appointed, that's okay, but they need some suggestions on how some of these personnel issues can be handled if by state law you cannot discipline or tell an elected employee how to do it. So we want to talk about, what are we going to do when you call me and say, "John Doe will not replace his colleague, because they've been calling him for 15 years." Don't hope for it. And that's really the only answer, or start a recall position. If we don't change, Acton stays two separate sides. District 1 road commissioner position, if February 4th or 5th, they look at the calendar, whatever day that special town meeting is, if it fails, at the next selectmen's meeting, the following Tuesday, the board of selectmen are going to have to advertise the position for District 1 road commissioner for the remainder of June. We talked about that in the beginning, they can't just appoint. So we will be advertising, looking for somebody to be road commissioner for those last few months. Nomination papers in the meantime, which are available 85 days before election, nomination papers will become available for the June election, a three-year term for District 1. No matter what happens, if we have an election, District 2, General Letourneau, is going to be a town employee period. So what could happen if this doesn't change is that Mr. Letourneau is going to be a town employee at the direction of the board of selectmen, just like all of the other department heads, and whoever is elected on the other side is going to be elected, and they're not going to have, they're going to have different authority over both road commissioners. So here we go from here. This is where the board is going to turn the lights on and they offer questions and answers. I believe they're going to limit it to three minutes. And really, focus on, if you don't think this is a good idea, on suggestions on how you might get around with some of the personnel issues that they've seen over the last three, All yours, ladies.
Okay. What's that?
I'm trying to lose that tone.
This is, uh...
Oh, okay. I just wasn't quite sure what we were doing wrong. Oh, top of the hall.
Okay, we will open up the podium to comments, suggestions, and opinions.
Am I timed in or not?
What's that?
Am I timed in or not?
Yes.
Hi, Mary Stanton. I was just wondering, if you have a position, like we do, working with the school committee, now you're saying, you know, he has to get OSHA training, or, you know, you need all these certificates, I understand. Where is, you know, so there's going to be a line item for different things besides the salary and benefits, correct?
Yeah, I would think so.
So you have no idea what you would budget for that?
Not...
As of yet?
No.
And that would have to be done in June if that goes through?
Yeah, we would, that would be part of the budget process that you would see.
All right, just make a note that, you know, it's not just the person, it's the things that go with the person.
Right, the training and stuff.
They would need travel expense, and a certificate costs money, and that's not the person's cost, it's the town's.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, you want your phone? Here you go. Anybody else?
Hey, guys. Paul Billen. My question was, it sounded like it started out to be a salary position, which to me, a salary position is not a 40-hour-a-week job. So my question is, in the salary, would this person, also the road commissioner, you know, the one road commissioner, would he be able to get overtime if he was called out, he had an emergency, he had to go and plow some road, you know, something happened, or if, you know, again, emergencies, you know, he had something go wrong outside the 40 hours a week, is, or he had to drive a truck, or, you know, do stuff? Is that...
So the way that Maine law is written is, salary and overtime and who is exempt from it is based on the amount of salary. So it's an amount per week, I believe it's currently at about $450 a week. So this person would be exempt from overtime, as I'm exempt from overtime, which means that if you have an election one week and you end up working 50 hours, welcome to salary. That's going to be the same case with this position. 40 hours is going to be what is scheduled and structured, but certainly, just like if there's a fire in town, we expect that fire chief for that same salary to work over. So they are exempt from overtime based on the amount that they would be paid.
Williams, nine cents, sit. Over. Williams, nine cents said, over. I complimented you all two weeks ago for the idea of getting into the idea of having a public works director. I'm still, you've made a great deal of improvements on the slides, uh, the presentation from two weeks ago, have taken most of the things that I have listed as mentionables tonight. I do want to ask, though, that you perhaps consider taking the word "road commissioner" out of this. This is going to be an administrative position, and you've already said it's gonna be 40-plus hours a week, just doing the administrative things, and I added also, in addition to the nice list that you had, that they would also be assisting in the reimbursement, in redeveloping the reimbursement systems, the bidding system, the elimination of procedures which might have the perception of improprieties, inequalities, or collusion that we have right now. And I would urge that that be added to the list of, uh, in the job description. I believe that the candidate must be a person who has some educational and/or experience as the portion, and that would be, as far as I can see in looking at the various positions in Maine online, a bachelor's degree or, and/or at least four years in a position of being a, uh, a, uh, public works director elsewhere.
Those will be considered on, on the, um, job description as well. We just did the job description, we didn't get to that part yet.
The piece about the road commissioner, you understand, there's no, if they don't make that in the title, we have to meet state statute, we have to have one.
You can keep the underlings beneath the, uh, beneath the...
It's gotta be in the question. We, even after the last meeting, we double-checked with the attorneys again, and it has to be in the question.
Then you wanna take at least, are we gonna call him a road commissioner?
Or not, we're gonna call him a public works director.
A her.
In the question, it has to be...
A her, and that's why I say get rid of all the physical stuff. You ought to open it to men and women.
Of course we are.
And you're not gonna find too many women to do snowplows and/or mowing lawns.
You never know, Mr. Williams.
I, if you're going to ask them to do all these administrative things, it's impossible, it's an impossible task that you're setting these people up for. One of the other things that I would like you to consider anyway is that the job description should include the requirement that the public works director cannot personally or financially participate in any private companies involved with similar functions mentioned in the job description. Uh, that to me is sort of a...
Unquestionable challenge.
...open up for, for, uh, problems that we've had in the past. Uh, the, um, other items, basically you've covered very nicely. Um, I would ask again that the salary be commensurate with the other department heads. This person should be considered as an official of the town in the same category as the CEO, the, uh, fire rescue chief, et cetera. Uh, but get rid of all the manual stuff. Uh, it's just not right, there's, it's, it's poorly written otherwise. If you put the word "road commissioner" on there, if you wanna leave the word "road commissioner" on there for this particular position, then take away the lawn mowing possibilities, the snow removal possibilities, and all of that. Because you're gonna turn people off on the one who might be really good administratively, okay? Who have no idea...
But we'll talk about this if there's something that...
Okay, well, that's all, all I'm asking you to do is to consider.
We'll definitely...
I think it's a real weakness in the way this is being aimed at the public, because the public sees road commissioner, and there was a road administrator mentioned by, by you, um, I guess it was a small A, and then the public works director. Uh, if you can't get away from the word "road commissioner," at least have this person be the head road commissioner, or something of that sort.
Well, and I think, just to, just to clarify, is that, I mean, this public works director, any good department head or any good leader, you know, they have to be able to, to do the job that they're expecting the court, the subordinates under them to do, so even though...
I would totally disagree on that when it comes to physical labor.
Well, how are they gonna give instruction on how to, you know, do A, B, and C if they're not familiar with the job?
Because they may very well have the experience of doing this.
Experience generally comes from, right, and the experience came from, from doing it at some point.
Yes.
Right, so...
But now, if you want this person to do 40 hours of really good administrative, changing some of the things that we had been dealt with in, over the last years, and making real changes, doing follow-up quality assurance on the jobs that have been done, et cetera, this is gonna be a full-time position. I wouldn't even mention manual labor in this at all, and I would like to see the women of our town and elsewhere have an equal opportunity of becoming a public works director.
Set the timer.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have to respectfully disagree with Will because, um, I could do this job, hands down. I'm a crane operator, I plow, I do many things that probably only men do, but I do it myself. Um, so I think a woman could do this job, I think women are very good administratively. And I would ask that, just like we expect our, um, our superintendent, we made a superintendent principal, because in Acton, people have to wear many hats, okay? We're a small town, and when you get one big administrative part, you want them to wear many hats. Many people here may not know, but our superintendent has a school bus driver's license, and we put him to the task of having to get on a school bus when something happened to our school bus driver, and he got on a bus and drove kids home. That's what we do, we wear many hats. So an administrator can shovel and can do things, and that's my opinion.
And that's the thing, I mean, it's, the board, Dr. Williams, definitely wants it to be minimal, but the, the right person needs to be able to do it if necessary, like Mary said. It's a good point.
I've been kinda getting bits and pieces of this whole thing over the period of, uh, the last couple of months here, and this is, this is something that's been in the, been in the works for a couple of years. I just want everybody to know that, and that's one of the reasons why I got done. But I'm looking at the numbers here, and I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna save all this money. Plus, you're taking, you're taking $94,000 at the top A, that is taking one whole district's general maintenance fund and disappearing on one administrative guy who's not gonna touch a shovel. You still got, you still have contract and everything else put out there, and you're gonna pay a guy $94,000 a year? Doesn't make any sense to me. The job is getting done. The job is getting done. Where you guys are screwing up here now is instead of making this a simple fix where you have a road commissioner right now that's capable of doing the job, you, you pushed both of us out, you got us out, you got what you needed, now all you gotta do is take advantage of it. Get rid of the district one and make one elected official. Myself, I'm sick of hearing popularity contests. I think the selectmen get, get elected because it's a popularity contest. I don't know what the requirements of a selectman is, but that was, it's always a popularity contest. But I always did my job. I don't care what you put up here. Every town meeting, people get up there and they said, Scott and I did our jobs. We had the best roads, plowing in the area, we always did. Okay? Not saying they're not gonna be again, but we always did. And, but what we're doing here is, the, the biggest problem we have here is, every time I see town employee, we had a meeting back in, I believe, August, where I said, I believe what we have to do here is we gotta get rid of the town employee. We have to get rid of the liabilities, all this other stuff, okay? But you didn't wanna do that. We would've made it so much simpler that, instead of putting a town employee in a private individual's vehicle, okay, which is a huge liability, okay, you would've gotten rid of that. I gave the select board this information, the ways of get around all this stuff. It would've gotten around the issues with Mr. Mooney, it would've gotten rid of some of the issues with me, okay? I did whatever I had to do. I wanna make damn clear that I did, everybody in my crew went and did their drug test. I don't wanna be put in that, okay? I always did. I don't care if they're at work, I used to go and get them at work and make them go. But, um, we should be, instead of worrying about having a guy sit in an office up here in this little town of Acton and spending $90,000, and we haven't talked about the truck, I don't think this guy's gonna ride around in his own vehicle for free. Okay, this, this ends up being a, turns into a snowball effect. You're gonna get administrator, next thing you know, he needs a runner. Okay, because the problem is, is people don't understand that DW excavation hired all these guys that worked for the town of Acton and kept them going through the year so that when they were needed, they were available. Okay, the problem you're gonna have here is, this administrator, okay, say Mr. Letourneau's doing the snowplowing, he gets the first option to be the head guy, you know, the guy to go and do the sweeping. What happens if you can't do it? Problem, another problem we have here is, I keep hearing contracted and this and that, okay? All that stuff's gotta be put out to bid. Anything over $5,000 a week has to be put out to bid. So now you're turning it into a quagmire, okay? This is a nightmare waiting to happen. We need a plan, okay? Now, myself, if I was in your shoes, I would get rid of the town employee, get rid of all your liabilities, lay it on the person that's doing the work. When DW excavation would go in and do a job, I pay my crew, their workman's comp, their li, my liability, everything is paid through me. But the, the reason why this doesn't wanna happen is because you guys wanna have your thumb on them.
What about the issue with the drug testing?
The drug testing?
What we do?
The drug testing's easy. I have my own drug testing problem, this was the issue I had. I had guys on my drug force in the town of Acton contracted plowing out, okay? And the three-year average for the plow, plow, town of Acton, okay, per side, okay? My side was, on a three-year average, was $100,000 a year to plow them and sand the roads, okay? I've heard some crazy numbers, $8,000 a mile. Those, those numbers are not accurate at all. That's what sand and everything added in. The average town in the area contracts their plowing out, plowing and sanding only, okay? Alfred just went, I think it's almost $7,100 a mile. Waterboro, $6,800 a mile, okay? Chapley's getting a great deal right now for $1,000, but you know what, I'd bank the fund, and next time it's not gonna be such a great deal. Sanford's paying more than that just to plow the roads, not even to sand them, okay? So there's a trend here. So what you're doing is, you, you, you guys seem to fail to realize that, I know, when I hear that, you know, having your own company muddies the water. Dave Wintle spend, would spend about $15,000 to $20,000 every fall to get his trucks ready. Dave Wintle would not get his money back until the end of January, almost February, if he was lucky. There were some years, three, four years ago, we had a line item budget of $76,000, okay, for the plowing. I gave back $25,000 back to the town in good faith instead of having it rolled over, okay? That means we only spent $50,000 that year, okay? We didn't make any money, but we carried that equipment through the year. Now, the problem we have here is, I, I know where you're going, this is, we want a full-time municipality, I know, I know this is what we want, you guys want.
No, it's not. So don't put words into words.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about just yourself, other people in the room that are pushing the agenda, and the problem is, eventually what's gonna happen, when you get the town administrator, it's gonna snowball into municipality. That's just what's gonna happen. But the problem you have is, is you're gonna get sucked into a, a, a trap here. Okay, now, DW excavation and Mooney excavation, Yeton excavation, Dave Wintle excavation, Bob Yeton, Dern King, all them people, okay, I guess muddied the waters for years, but they went out and spent their own money, okay, and made very little return. Their money was made on the other side of it. That was to keep their guys busy, okay? But what's gonna end up happening is here is, the town of Acton's gonna get stuck in this trap, where they're gonna end up having to go out and spend real money. Now, I, I've heard on these meetings that this isn't gonna increase our taxes, it's gonna increase our taxes, okay? Because we got a lot of pipe dreams out there, and we got all these bridges, and we got all these culverts, and we're gonna get engineers for this and engineers for that, that costs money. When you, when you disappear a complete line item budget to hire one person, okay, now we're gonna add on to that line item. But at the end of the day, we're gonna have to start buying trucks, 'cause it's gonna happen. And, you know, how many trucks are you gonna buy? When Scott and I were doing this job efficiently, which we thought we were, and everybody seemed to think we were doing a great job then, there was 10 trucks running for the town of Acton. Okay, town of Acton's not buying 10 trucks. I don't, I don't believe that will ever happen, I know it won't happen, because you won't be able to find enough help. That's, that's another thing that we did, we found the help, okay? But what's gonna end up happening is you're gonna get sucked into this trap where, like town of Sanford did last year, they called DW excavation because they couldn't find anybody to plow their roads. Name your number, okay? And that's when it gets expensive. And that's what's gonna happen here, because you guys think you're gonna save money here, but you're gonna take it hard on the other end over there. And the system we had worked. Even when Scott and I didn't get along, it worked, okay? Jobs were still getting done. Unfortunately, we were getting along at the end of it, and then everything fell apart. It wasn't because of us, we always figured it would, would've been because of us. It was because there was too many people telling everybody what to do. Now, one thing that I failed to mention was, two years ago...
Your time is...
Two years ago, Scott and I put in for a $15,000 a year stipend.
I'm gonna have to cut you off and give somebody else an opportunity.
And you're asking for $94,000 for God, we asked for $30,000 a year.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to cut you off.
I'm sure.
Six years, three in Chapley, six in Acton. And I'm disgusted.
Like I said, this isn't, this isn't a negative, listen...
No, no, I want the town of Acton people to hear what we've got to say. You people wanna run the road commissioners, the road commissioners, what do you think they're there for? They're there, they had intelligence, they, they knew what they were doing, all the jobs were getting done, and you guys stopped it because you guys had to have it your way, and that was the only problem here.
No.
You, yes, it was, it was you two, you two.
Enough.
The other guy, wasn't it?
Enough!
Oh, is that right?
Yes, because it's not.
Is it, am I legal? Have I got a word?
We're gonna need to have Dan here or somebody, again? You know?
Take advantage of it, guys, you got what you wanted, you got Scott and I going.
This is really well done, organized, the PowerPoint. I just have a few concerns myself, and it's really not with the board selection, I know you guys are in the middle of a bunch of stuff here, but...
It's okay.
Uh, one of the things, I guess, when I, when I see the slide that says what we've seen, and you get down the list with that about unequal pay, I don't know what that means, if someone could explain that, but you can do it after I finish, but...
Well, it means that, you know, maybe both sides had somebody that, okay, both districts each had somebody that had worked maybe the same amount of years, and one's making $4 more than the other. There were no raises given, um, so those type of things.
Isn't that something that could be rectified fairly easy?
We tried.
On that issue?
Yep.
Don't you think that?
Yep, definitely.
Then I see here, I gotta, I gotta support what Dave Wintle said, that, that this has gone, this has been in the works for like three years. I, I didn't even talk to him, I haven't talked to David and whatever, but, uh, I went through a bunch of the meetings, in fact, I got ahold of my nephew, and he's in, um, uh, video editing, he works for a sports information company, and he's gonna help me out. He was gonna send me a program, but I, I don't know how to do it. So he's gonna help me out, go through, I picked out certain things in, in certain meetings. And this goes back almost three years ago. And, uh, this night and the special meeting coming up was actually talked about two and a half years ago by the board. This was one of their driving, you know, this whole thing was being driven personally and with an agenda to get these two guys out of here. If anyone denies that, the way these guys are treated, you know, at certain times, I know a lot of mistakes, it goes both ways. It says here refusal, refusal of work to be done, I think I know what that has to do with, you know? Then it says, uh, road commissioner complaints, gone unanswered. I know over the years, all the way back to Bernie and Gary... I know over the years, all the way back to Bernie and Gertan, you know, that really hasn't been much of an issue, even up to now. I can't complain about any of the guys who have done my roads, or, you know, just different times when I had issues, talked to them, no matter who it was, it was always taken care of, you know? Refusal to attend meetings. We all know, if you go back, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this video together, and it's gonna be from live clips from different committees in this town, and I'm gonna post it. And you're gonna see that this whole thing did start around three years ago. And how these guys, you know, it went both ways, you know? Then it talks about, you know, the refusal to attend meetings. Why didn't they attend meetings? Because the environment was so toxic, the way these guys were talking.
Right here, right here, for the toxic, you know.
This is for the people to talk, Kim, I have some things I want to say, out of respect, I don't, I'm not, you know, but I just think that we're going way too fast. Two guys will basically run out of here, I don't care what anybody says, that's what happened. And here, here we are today, you know? All, this whole list of what we've seen, if I was one of the former road commissioners, I'd, I'd be pretty pissed off reading this, to be honest with you, you know? And I realize that some of these issues, but this isn't all their fault, you know what I mean? This is not their fault. You go, even still today, at some of the meetings, I see people hammering town officials, and nobody stops them. It's going on today, you know? The beating these two guys took, it's, it's just unbelievable to me. So we're gonna go to a ninety-four thousand dollar superintendent who's not gonna do any work out on the road, after all these years of Bernie and Gertan and, you know, Dave and Scott, and now with Joe Letourneau? I don't even know who Joe Letourneau is, right there. Don't even know who the guy is. But I hear this guy goes out and buys, spends a hundred grand around that on equipment. And I understand he's gonna be appointed for a little while, but, and I don't even know how he stands on this. But I know if I was him, if I spent a hundred thousand dollars, I'm gonna wanna fight for that position. I'm gonna wanna fight like hell, you know? And, you know, the money end of it, ninety-four grand for, somebody come in here and, what is it?
No.
Where'd that number come from?
That is, yeah, that is the high on the.
That's the highest, that's the highest.
Well, still.
Round fifty-two. The FICA, you know, their insurance and all that.
Yeah.
Article.
I mean, this is a, this is a.
Can I just state for the fact that I hadn't worked here a week as a selectman, and one of the road commissioners threatened to resign, and I didn't, hadn't even been here yet?
Same thing with me.
And if this, if this, if this, then I'm gonna resign, and I'm like.
Yeah, well, they resigned, and they're gone, and it's over with, but.
But I hadn't.
We, we've got to move forward, you know, that's, that's what we're doing. Okay, but let me talk.
They're asking for, you know, people.
And that's what I'm doing here, moving forward.
But you're, you're making it sound like you're blaming the board for the.
I'm not blaming your board for anything. And I, and I clarified that in the beginning.
That's kinda how, that's kinda how I felt.
In the very beginning, that's what I said to you folks, it has nothing to do with you. And I'm going to put this video together, I have my nephew put it together, it's actual live footage from meetings. Almost three years ago, there was a board, committee members talking about, basically talking about this night, when we're going to, that's where we're gonna go, it's not gonna stay, it's not gonna stay elected. This has been a driving force over this amount of time, there's no doubt in my mind, you know? But, you know, just because it bumps in the road, you know, you got two guys in there now, who, give them a chance, let them work. I just think that going away from this process now is, is, this doesn't make sense, you know? And everything on that list right there, what we've seen.
Is it just because of the ninety-four thousand dollars?
No, it's not, no, it's.
Jimmy, I'm just wondering who, so who do you, who would you expect to be responsible for communicating with the state to take care of these bridges?
We have selectmen, right?
Yep.
You know?
So she takes care of that.
Well, we were told it wasn't our job.
While he was, while he was here is.
It was confusing.
You just found out who owned, is that true? You just recently found out?
We've known who's owned road, road bridge, I mean, the canal.
Well, that's not how I understood it.
One was, but one was questionable.
Yeah.
Right, and then the other one, we.
And then the inability to prioritize, bridge and dams and culverts, I saw those conversations, you know? They weren't friendly. They weren't friendly at all, how these guys were treated, you know? It, I could see this coming, I could see it coming, not this, but I could see them both resigning. I think that was a mission of some people, and they succeeded. And they're not gonna stop there.
So is, is the selectman going to create a ten to twenty-year plan so that we can qualify for grants?
Because we, we can't seem to get that, and we need to get grants.
Well, I don't know. I don't know, I mean, maybe you can get a grant writer, but not for ninety-four thousand dollars, or stuff like that. I mean, you can get a grant writer to do quite a few different things, you know? But you need to roll all that stuff into this position.
In order to get the, the grant writer, we need a, we need a plan.
I know, I know how it works.
And I don't, but I am, I mean, I'm not educated as a, as a road person.
Yeah.
So, so we did go, and we did talk about it, and, you know.
But I can tell you though, what we've seen, you go through this list, and this is fifty-fifty to blame on this list with everyone, except for maybe the refusal to report.
That's my point. My point is, is that you get a new select person every year. You get, almost a new road commissioner every year. And so it's hard to grab onto something and go with it, if somebody's, you know, the position's changing hands when you have these long-term plans.
Yeah, but it never, look, it, it's never been like this, it's never been like this. There's this, there's so much emotion driving to where we are tonight, that brought us here. There's so much emotion, and personal.
Back and stuff.
If, if anyone denies it, they're crazy. I'll put the video together, I'm gonna post it online, and you'll see.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Gregory Vermette, I'd just like to say that I agree with what Smith said. They were picked on bad, and I've mentioned that a lot of times before, how they were getting picked on. And as far as being able to see it coming, yeah, we could, we could, and it wasn't right. Because like I said, from Portsmouth to here, Acton had the best roads out of all the towns around, the best, period.
We don't dispute that, we have, you know, absolutely, you know?
I was curious though, is the vote gonna be to authorize the town of Acton, shall vote to authorize the board of selectmen to appoint one road commissioner public works director for a term of one year, 2019, 2020, is that what the vote's gonna be at the next meeting? So what's gonna happen after 2020?
They will reappoint, like they would any, code.
For to come to the town again, I mean, for to come up to the town vote again?
If it's, if it's, if it's an appointed position, the board has the right to reappoint, like animal control.
Okay, so, so say we have a trial period for one year, or, you know, it ends up being a trial period for one year, what would have to be done to go back to the old?
This reverse process, you could do it again and go back to elected.
Would we have to do a petition? I mean, would the select?
Don't you just kinda come to our meetings and you're not happy? How does it work?
If it passes, and changes to appointed, and the year comes and goes, and, I mean, the year doesn't even have to come and go, any group of selectmen or by petition could force another special town meeting to ask for them to go back to elected.
Okay.
That could happen.
I think the road commissioners, over the years, I've been coming up here over fifty years, I've been living here about seven years now, but I've been coming up here over fifty years, and my dad, my parents, you know, the roads have always been in good shape, no matter who the commissioners were, there just seems to be an awful lot of infighting, and especially recently, because there's been pressure put on the select people, select persons, to, to oversee the road commissioners. And I'd like to read something to you, state law twenty-three MRSA two-seven-zero-one is reasonably clear that the selectmen have authority with regard to the road commissioner's duties, in the absence of a statute, charter, provision, or, and to the contrary, any decision involving the duties and responsibilities of the road commissioners shall be made by majority of the board of selectmen, whose decision shall be final. You guys seem to be getting a lot of pushback from the road commissioners, 'cause they didn't wanna do that.
Right.
That's, that's all I have to say.
When there was a job, I was happy with the way the roads were taken care of.
I just have one brief comment to make with respect to the reference to the law that was just made. The law, and I'm well aware of what it says, and it has been repeated many times over, but it's wrong. And it's wrong for simply this reason. Common law supersedes statute. And the common law for the town of Acton, which is a home rule town, says that the ultimate arbiter of any disagreement between municipal officers and officials is ultimately resolved by superior court justice, not here. So the selectmen don't have the final word, superior court justice does. And any disagreement can ultimately be resolved there if it can't be resolved at the town meeting. So it's a misapplication of the law that has repeatedly occurred here, that has led to some of the misunderstandings of a register.
I guess that's one of the differences, and it's kinda deteriorated over the years, but if I think of prior boards that go way back, they were always accused of micromanagement if you go back, you know, years ago. But those boards were hands-on, coming up with a plan for the bridges, coming up with a plan, you know, working with, whether it be a road committee, or before there was a road committee with the road commissioners, but they were dictating those duties, and they were relying on that state statute that, you know, says, you know, that you are ultimately, in the, in the absence of a charter, you do have the authority to assign duties to a road commissioner, and if they don't do it, then that's what the superior court is for, you know, and vice versa. If the road commissioner fails to complete, you know, their duties, the board of selectmen has always used the power of the purse to force them into doing what they need to do, or, you know, putting a freeze other than non-essential, you know, other than essential things. We did always have the best roads, and when it, when I hear that it's a popularity contest, there is no lost, love lost between the Winchells and myself, at all, at all. However, I would vote for David Winchell Junior, hands down, any election, because the roads reflected it. And I understand that he bullied you folks, and I, and I understand that you felt like you had nowhere to turn, but prior boards would've, and, and I'm not, I'm not comparing you, but I'm saying that in the end, it was, the writing was on the wall for the last year, what was going to happen with both of those road commissioners, everybody saw it coming, you know, and I just wish that it could've been handled differently. And I wholeheartedly, even with this presentation, believe that we should be electing a road commissioner in this town, because we have done that forever, and we've always had the best roads in town at the end of the day, you know? And I just think that when we say, well, anybody could get elected, you know, 'cause it's a popularity contest, everybody that's ever been elected has done a really good job in this town. Another little side note is, when I was looking at the presentation, we were talking about the summer maintenance, and it said that the winter contractors would get first opportunity at the summer work. That really does go against the, the norm in the, you know, fair bid type thing.
That was to suggest consistency and familiarity.
Cont continuity, I understand that, you know? But working in construction, it's always, you know, it really should always be the, the fairest thing to the client, which in this case is the taxpayers, is to put it out to bid every time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Suggestions, anything?
Couple of things, Chuck, I agree. I guess the question would be is, I've heard a couple of times tonight, rather than electing two road commissioners, could we just elect one and be an administrative person through that election, and not associated with any type of excavation, or where they would have any kind of financial involvement? And I don't know if that's an option that we have, of voting for an appointed position, a single elected position, or keeping it the same, that was an option. One other point that I'd like to make is that I think whether it's an appointed position or elected by going to line item budgeting, that you'll have a much better control over what activities are taking place, we're not just giving a certain amount of money and say, do what you want. You know, if we need to know, if you know that a road's gotta be repaired, a line item is made for that, and then it's the responsibility of the road commissioner, if they wanna spend money, they have to spend it on the line item that you had approved and was approved by the, the town meeting. But again, I don't know whether it's an option of being able to have three selections rather than just to offer the vote.
Yes, either way, if you went to one, whether it was elected, you'd still have to go to town, town meeting ninety days before an election. Yeah, so if they decided, they could put a variety of questions on the special town meeting in February, to see which, if any, passed.
Right, so suggestions. One road commissioner, why couldn't it be a stipended position and not an, you know, an employee where you're paying benefits? And in that stipend, you'd be paying for them to subcontract, like we subcontract this, the bus transportation, it's a subcontract, you know? I don't see why you can't subcontract out people who do this, who have the trucks to do the plowing and stuff, which is the plan. So, and then, you know, they would have to do the paperwork, but it could be a stipend position.
Thank you. Dennis?
Would you want me to say something?
Come on, you haven't spoke yet tonight. Just get it out of the town now. All right, Jim?
One of the points that I, I think was emphasized in the presentation was making use of grants for different opportunities, whether that be through an elected road commissioner or an appointed one, I think that should become a requirement. And we're talking about, you know, multi-hundred thousand dollar jobs, a couple of them, perhaps we should have a requirement that whoever takes the position, whatever the position is, is also responsible for getting grants done, being submitted to multiple agencies within the state or federal government.
I'd like to see if this doesn't pass a warrant article to put money aside to get a grant writer, because we're gonna need one one way or the other, whichever way this goes.
Let me get my timer.
Remember, if anybody says anything, you have to deduct half of my time.
No.
All right? Listening to everything that's been said, regardless of which way this vote goes, what the townspeople decide to do, the bottom line is that we have to move forward, we have to learn from our mistakes that we've made, put the past in the past, and come up with a plan, whether it's job descriptions for road commissioners, the duties, whatever it is, a five-year plan, because there was a talk about it's hard to have a road commissioner come up with a five-year plan when they're only elected for three. Well, the plan isn't for the road commissioners, the plan's for the town. So, and the road commissioners should be part of that. And I've been on both sides of when the road commissioners were working well with the committees I've been on, and I've been on committees where they weren't. And, and things get out of control, bottom line. And, but, with that being said, the selectmen did not force these people to resign, that's something they chose to do, okay? And as taxpayers, regardless of what somebody invests in a business, 'cause everybody we've had in the past as a road commissioner has always invested money in their businesses, all right? As a taxpayer, it's not our responsibility to make sure their business is successful. If they didn't make any money this year because there wasn't any snow, geez, sorry, but look at the money we saved. And they're no different than any other business. They, everybody, when they decide to start a business, they take a chance and hope this will be successful for them, but if it's not, it really is not a problem. Your problem is to the people that are paying the bills. And I, before we move forward with a. And I, before we move forward with our next election, we need something in writing how is everything's gonna operate.
And we can't, see, this is-
I'm not sure you can get job descriptions on elected positions.
Right, and this is, this is the issue. Maybe if this doesn't go through, maybe we oughta start thinking about a charter.
Well, you can do duties.
Because if you do that, then you can do these things, so that whenever a road commissioner does run, they know what's gonna be expected, you know, like, you know?
And MA puts out a thing on a roads manual, and it tells you what your selectmen can do and what they can't do. And, uh, they are very clear on whose authority-
But we have no authority, unless we wanna take them to court, I mean-
'Cause you have the authority by law.
We don't.
Yes, you do.
We think we do, but then they resign if they don't wanna do it.
I mean, I wanna say that, you know, we, we don't wanna see-
You do it. You've already done it. You've done it a couple of times already, in the last year, when they refused to do something. You have the authority to have it done.
Right, but there are other things that, that we have-
I know there's a lot to it, and I appreciate that. But I'm just saying, we need to move forward, that's all.
Yep, we do. We knew you wanted to.
Yeah. Oh, yes, I have, um, on Saturday, the ice rink is having a grand opening. Um, and obviously the ice rink on Route one oh nine from twelve to three. Um, no, Smores?
Smores.
In Hoco?
Hoco.
In a fire pit?
Please, Smores kids are a dollar. There'll be a fire pit, warming, and, um-
A lot of-
Music.
Oh, good, music.
Yeah, there'll be music.
Sat, this Saturday.
Twelve to three on Saturday. The rec committee has worked very hard to figure out the goal, so.
Sounds like fun.
Do we know when a, uh, special meeting is gonna be?
February, is it Wednesday, the February sixth, at seven PM?
We appreciate, you know, everybody coming out and-
Thank you.
Letting us know how you feel, and, I mean, we're just here to-
We're still open for suggestions.
Don't forget to stop by the clerk's office for ordering your girl's cup of tea on the way out.
Uh, not, not on your way out, tomorrow, it's two-thirty.
Come on.
Our office is closed. Tomorrow, though, I'll even accept phone and calls for you, Cal.
Have a good night.
Thank you.